We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, May 3, 2021, to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to an American flag, and then it will be followed by a prayer from our attorney. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God in heaven, we pray to you today on behalf of our nation's lawmakers and for the citizens they represent. We pray that you grant them a spirit of wisdom, insight, and cooperation. We pray that you help them to serve this country in its best interest. We pray that we learn to love one another as citizens so that we might have peace and justice tempered with mercy. Thank you for the freedom that we have in this nation. Thank you for those who have fought and died defending our country. Thank you for the protection and provision you have placed over us as your blessings. May your will be done as we seek to follow your example in humble imitation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioners, your agenda was provided before you this week, and are there any items that you would like to add or remove from the tonight's agenda? You're no one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is passed and approved for tonight's meeting. First item we have is the petition of citizens to discuss agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair.
We have nobody signed up tonight.
Right, no citizens desiring to speak before the board. Item two would be the consent agenda. You have there the minutes of the April 19, 2021, regular session, and also the tax releases and refunds. Are there any items to pull from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Commissioner Liner, you serve on the area agency on aging board.
I do.
I thought you did. It has you down here as a board member, aging board member.
That's the Craven Aging Board Member.
ECC.
I'm sorry.
That's ET.
That's ET.
Okay, well, I'm looking at two different things here. So ladies, let's disregard what I said. I was gonna have you to introduce tonight. But I'm gonna take off. I did not mean to cause such a disruption. We're honored tonight to have with us Ms. Heather O'Connor, who is the area agency on aging director. Also, we have some other individuals who are with us who she will introduce. So at this time, if you will come and make a presentation. And I apologize for that.
I've got so many, I don't want to omit some of them.
Chairman Jones and Board of Commissioners, thank you all for allowing us to present to you all tonight. My name is Katie Bordeaux, and I'm the Executive Director for the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments. Commissioner Mitchell, we thank you for serving on our executive board and our general membership board. Commissioner Liner, we thank you for being on the Aging Planning Board, representing Craven County, and we appreciate your past service. Commissioner McCabe.
Thank you.
You also are on our board. To like to introduce our board attorney, Jill Quattlebaum, who is here in support. January Brown here is our lead aging consultant and lead monitor, and our agent director is Heather O'Connor. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys letting us speak tonight. We have multiple things that we're just gonna give you an overview of, just so you're aware of all the different funding that is available through aging. We have in your packet, you will see that there is a list of all the programs your county currently participates in with the funding stream. And behind that is a list of all the programs that are available. And then these programs, when the budgets come out, you as commissioners, your aging board will review and they make recommendations on what programs they're gonna do and which providers get what funding, and then you sign off on them. So what we thought it would be a good opportunity to kinda let you know what is out there because right now with COVID, we've had a lot of changes with what our, you know, our clients out in the public need, because more of them are at home, so they might need more of your home improvement, ramps and stuff like that. Meals, oh, the meals have just grown and grown. We've done a lot of meals, but some of them are still needing transportation to get to the grocery store, to get to doctors, because they don't want to ride, they're scared to come out and ride. So we're just trying to make you aware of everything, especially HCCBG, which is your Home and Community Care Block Grant, which is our biggest funding pot. And we're getting ready to go to contracts, and those NGAs just came down from the state. So we're getting ready to send out the county's allocations here in the next few days. So we wanted to go over the programs that are out there and so that you could see what your constituents are interested in and where the need is. Because you have areas like Cove City, and then you have down in Harlow, they may not have the transportation to come up to get a meal, or we may not have the resources to do home-delivered meals to them, but they still may be in need. So now is the time that we could grow the programs within Craven County and bring on new providers that may be able to reach those outlined areas. So January's gonna go over some very specific stuff with some of the funding. So January.
Thank you for having me today. So some of the things to keep in mind when we're looking at the programs that we're servicing to older adults in our community is that we're looking at our program goals. As Heather stated, we have the Home and Community Care Block Grant, but we also have two other funding sources that come through to your county. One is called evidence-based 3D healthy promotions programs, and then you also have a family caregiver support program. So they're also servicing older adults and the caregivers in your county. So our goal of the programs is to access to service, in-home services, long-term care advisory, such as your ombudsman programs, and also legal assistance. We also provide legal aid funding to service to our older adults. With that, knowing what your community's needs are, doing an assessment of it, I know Havelock in the past has done a needs assessment of their community members throughout the county to see what would best be the way to utilize their funding. We do suggest trying to find out what your constituents' needs are, doing a survey across the entire county through all the pockets, because a lot of the time, we might think we know what people want or what they need, but we haven't asked them. So when it comes to older adult services, we really wanna try to get into the weeds and down on the ground to find out what those needs are. Common services that are provided even with the family caregiver support program could include RASPIT programs. You can also do supplemental services and even doing education. We've been doing a lot of education this past year COVID virtually for caregivers. Here in Craven County, as a matter of fact, we've been having a virtual support group meeting once a month, and we are going to have our first in-person meeting this Wednesday, as a matter of fact, with those caregivers. So the need is out there for services despite COVID. As Heather said, a lot of the services that you provide are for the most vulnerable population, looking at that priority of service, but also being proactive and looking at those individuals that might not be at the stage where they need 24-hour care or the in-home aid services, but more of those proactive type of services, which could include the nutrition programs, having the senior center programs available, and the evidence-based programs. A lot of those evidence-based or healthy promotion programs that have been utilized through evidence-based statistics and analogies to prove that they can assist older adults, and they could be things such as diabetes education, fall prevention, matter of balance, at ease, and Tai Chi exercise. So when you're looking at the evidence-based programs, right now in this county, we have an evidence-based program that we're servicing, which is Powerful Tools for Caregivers. It's a six-week course for caregivers, and it helps them learn how to take care of themselves so they don't have caregiver burnout. So that is some of the services that your county providers are doing. Right now in Craven County, we have a total of six providers?
Five.
Five providers, from transportation, caregiver services, and older adult services, and legal aid. So we have a pretty good basis of individuals that are helping service the clients.
Our main point is we just want to make sure that we are reaching all the residents in need in Craven County, and right now with COVID, they have not really had a voice because they're isolated, they're in homes. So that's why we're just trying to bring awareness to what is available. It may mean changing up and learning a new program, and right now's the time to do it because we are getting ready for contracts and starting a whole new year with funding. So that is our information, and if you have any questions, just let us know, but we've tried to provide you with as much information as we could, and we're available online or by telephone.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the turnaround time in surveys? If we do a survey of community, how long do we have before we need report back to you?
It depends on the type of survey you do, whether you're doing mailouts or whether you're doing electronically, because we just did a survey for a project we're trying to do, and I think we did it in about a week, but it just depends on how you're getting the surveys out there, and sometimes the post office can do like a drop mass mailing for you. So there's various ways, but sometimes just doing the electronic ones, it doesn't reach all the clients, because a lot of them may not have the capability, the Wi-Fi, or may not know how to use those computers.
Havelock did a survey last year, I think it was last year, and what they did is they did it electronic, so they had it on their Facebook page, they had it on their website, they did it through all their distribution lists, but they also put it in the electrical bill.
And their water.
And their water bill. And so anybody that saw it, you know, that came out in the mail, and so you saw, and that's how I saw it, I'm a, you know, I was living at the time in Havelock, and I was like, oh, when I called up the senior secretary, I said, oh, you guys are doing a survey, blah, blah, blah. And so they got a lot of response from everybody around the county by not just surveying the people, the older adults that are already receiving services in the county, but by doing it through the electrical bill, they were able to reach out to caregivers and loved ones and spouses and older adults, because we all still get a paper copy of our, you know, your electrical bill.
Right.
So that was a wonderful way. So when they got their survey results, they really got their entire area covered, and got really good results from that survey.
Thank you. Good information.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, do you and staff have any?
No, sir.
All right, well, we thank you all for being here this evening and for your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
All right, next we have the introduction of the new YMCA Executive Director, and I will defer to Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you. Yes, please, if y'all would go watch your heads, please. All the EMS people. With it, thank you all for coming. This is Mr. David Hagy, who is here. He was our new YMCA Director. He'll be taking over 17th of May.
Yes.
Yes, and I was fortunate, I met with him for a couple of hours on Saturday morning. He brings new vision to the idea of new and expanded YMCA programs that can be put into the community that are not necessarily defined by the walls of the YMCA center itself. So program outreach as opposed to four-wall outreach. But I will let Mr. Eglington, who has been involved with the Y for decades and knows far more than I do about it, focus on the introduction, please.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. It is a pleasure to be here. Chairman and Commissioners, I want to thank you all for having us tonight. I am Don Eglington, proud resident of Craven County for the last 40 years. Can't claim it my whole life, wish I could. For 38 of those 40 years, I've been involved with our YMCA because it's been my belief that this community can be helped and needed a YMCA. We so much appreciate you giving us some time tonight. It's my honor to introduce David Hagy. David is our new CEO for the Y. As Commissioner Mitchell has mentioned, he'll be taking over on May 17. David is a native of Wake County, grew up in Cary, went to Guilford College, was one of those sort of extraordinary people I always wondered about, student athlete, all-conference running back for Guilford, and has been with the YMCA for a long, long time. We're so honored to have him and think he will do big things for our community and our YMCA. David.
Thank you for your time and having me here tonight. About 20 years ago to the day, I was sitting in my office, which was downstairs in the basement of Milliner Hall on Guilford College's campus, and I got a call that said, hey, come upstairs, there are some gentlemen that want to take you to lunch. So that time, I was a 25-year-old, something, not a lot of cooking skills, so anybody that was buying, I was flying. So I flew upstairs, and lo and behold, it was a CEO of the YMCA of Greensboro, and one of his branch executives, Liam Behrens and Joe Warwick. And after about an hour of talking and a grilled chicken sandwich was pretty good, and a brownie, I think sealed the deal, they convinced me to change careers and become a Y professional. I'd never considered a YMCA as a career or profession, and I think the brownie is what sealed the deal, but lo and behold, Joe Warwick saw something in me that I didn't see in myself. He saw my purpose. And so 20 years, fast forward 20 years, I'm here before you as with the opportunity to lead your YMCA, and I'm more than excited to do that. As Commissioner Mitchell mentioned, I am excited to lead this YMCA, but lead it in a very different way to make sure that we are outside of our walls. My vision for our Y is to connect people to each other, to their passion and their purpose. And we can't do that all the time just at a facility. It's gotta be out and stretching out, and we're gonna challenge our team to do that each and every day with our heart and our head and our hands. We're gonna use our head to make sure that we are good stewards of the resources that you all have given us and entrusted in us. We also know that we can't do this work alone, so we're gonna strengthen those existing partnerships and also create partnerships that we don't currently have. And we're gonna make sure that we bring our hands so that do that work that's also hard, and sometimes not the warm, fuzzy kind of work, but some of those difficult conversations to make sure that we're able to pull people together, and we're gonna use our hearts because we know that to do this work, it can't be about us. It's really gotta be about the folks that we serve, and our goal is to make sure that each and every citizen of Craven County can reach their fullest potential. And I guess Malcolm X, I'm sorry, but Muhammad Ali summed it up best when he said that service is a rent that we pay for our space here on earth, and so I am excited to be here and do my part to pay rent with you all and serve our Craven County community. So thank you very much for your time.
Any questions, Board? If not, David, thank you, and Mr. Chairman, thank you both for being here. We appreciate your presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good evening. With him, his wife's name is Thaley. She is a professional in her own right. Brownie may have sealed the deal with him on the being a Y professional. Thaley sealed the deal for us.
It's good.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Good evening.
Good.
Next on the agenda is the Craven County Board of Education Budget Presentation, Dr. Megan Doyle, and I think we also have one of their board members, their Vice Chair, Ms. Kimberly Smith, and their Finance Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners. It's gonna be a little difficult for me because I can't see my slides, so you guys are testing me this evening. So Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners, I am pleased to present the Board of Education's adopted budget for fiscal year 2022. I want to take a minute, the next slide, to share a few celebrations of which we would not be sharing in if it were not for the seven members sitting in front of me, and that is, first, we were able this school year to increase our local teacher supplement to one of the higher teacher supplements in the state of North Carolina. We're now at 10%. In addition, we returned to in-person learning on October 2021 and added, excuse me, October, I should say 2020, with our elementary students in grades kindergarten, four days a week, our significantly cognitively disabled students and physically disabled students, four days a week, grades one through five, two days a week, and then grades six through 12, at least one day a week. That increased in January of 2021 to all of our first through fifth grade students being able to be in person four days a week, and then most recently added our grades six through 12, four days a week as well. For those in the audience who are wondering why it's not five days a week, we still have a pretty significant portion of our students that are receiving instruction virtually. Approximately, it has fluctuated. Every time the governor changes their order, then we have to make some adjustments, and so it's gone from 2,800 to over 3,000 at times, and so anywhere between 20 and 25% of our students at any given time are receiving instruction virtually. We know that those students, some of them have been very successful, and this has been a unique opportunity for them to receive instruction this way, but for a vast majority of those students, we are hoping to get them back in person as soon as possible. And so a lot of that will depend on the options that we are required to provide in the fall for fiscal year 22, school year, but also our opportunities to add virtual learning for students who would be successful in that environment. And so we have established some requirements for students who would be in our virtual academy moving into the next school year, which are predicated on their success this school year. We've also been able to provide a device to every child, and again, that's another thing, although it's not listed in our celebrations here, it is a direct result of the partnership between our Board of Commissioners and our Board of Education, and that device has been the window into our students' homes, but it's also been the window of our students and back into our classrooms with our teachers, and so we appreciate that. We have not stopped working and not stopped getting better. Our teachers are being trained in classroom learning systems, which essentially is helping our students to learn how to learn. If ever there was a time for our students to build those skills, this last 18 months has definitely been that time. And our students, through interactions with their teachers, are being asked what instructional activities are the most beneficial for them, and then using that information not only to assist their teacher in getting their learning better, but also in understanding what helps them to learn best when they are in an independent learning situation. We've restarted our Craven County Schools Leadership Academy, serving our principals and assistant principals. Our early colleges continue to thrive, and our partnership with Craven Community College is also a significant benefit that our students receive, because we have students who are receiving Career and College Promise courses increasingly, and that has increased every year of the last five years. And so those are strong partnerships that allow our students, once they are in high school, to take community college courses, reduce the impact and the expense to their families, and to begin their four-year if they want to, or finish their two-year college degree even before they finish high school. And then I would be remiss if I did not remind the Board of Commissioners and the public what great work our school nutrition department has done, and that is extended into this school year, but during the time from March when we closed school last year in person until June at the end of last school year, our school nutrition department served over 1 million meals, and that's more than Wake County Public Schools. Next slide, I'd like to remind this board, many of who participated in our visioning that in 19, or I was gonna say 1984, in 2018, our community came together in a large 62-member community stakeholder group and created the vision that you see in front of you. And really, again, we've really had an opportunity this year to see some of these things come to life, empowering our students and having our students think about their lives in totally different ways, and also in their learning. There's been a great deal of community engagement, and again, our school system has been powered by the partnerships both in this room and outside these walls. Next slide. We have five goals in our strategic plan that involve improving our school performance as measured by the state's assessment and accountability system, reducing our turnover rate, which has been, as you know, particularly challenging for Craven County schools, providing systems of curriculum, instruction, and assessment that help us to improve our school performance, engaging our community, and then making sure that we're using continuous improvement to be good stewards of the resources that we are provided by the taxpayers and through our state funds. Next slide. As you know, we continue to have budget challenges. The biggest challenge for us in Craven County schools and really in the other 114 school districts across the state is that we have not seen an adopted state budget in quite a while, and that lack of an adopted state budget really puts us in limbo in a number of ways in terms of depending on our funds. What you'll see on the next slide is, next slide, please, is a, was supposed to be an animation of the historical per pupil, local per pupil expenditures in our school system. And you'll see that that investment at our local county government level has increased over time, but we still have a ways to go in terms of comparison with other districts in our region. Next slide. Another challenge which has come to this Board of Commissioners and is a matter of work that we are doing with our facilities department and as well with our Board of Education is the number of small schools that we have. This is also added to because K3 class size requirements have lowered the operational capacity of all of our schools that are serving elementary students. So we have requirements for how many students that we can have in a kindergarten, first, second, and third grade classroom, and the lowers those numbers have become over the last four years, the more classrooms we need in schools that have not been adjusted since that class size legislation went into place. You can see, and I provided both last year's membership as well as this year's membership just to see some comparisons, but again, every time I've presented this slide to the Board of Commissioners, this number has increased, the number of schools that are on this slide. The next slide is a case study in what that K3 class size means in a very small school. If you look at, for example, J.T. Barber Elementary School, and this is an example from 2019, you see a kindergarten class, or kindergarten group of students that numbers 37, 53 first graders, 32 second graders, and then you can go up. And then based on the class size requirement formulas that the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction is sending to us based on North Carolina General Assembly legislation, you can see that our students don't fall into nice, neat packages. So although in grade, a grade kindergarten in this particular year, we could have 18 students in a classroom, in this next school year that we have coming up, we'll only be able to have, I believe it's 17 students in a classroom. First grade will be 16. And so as you go up grades four and five, although we are allotted teachers based on a ratio for fourth and fifth grade students, there's no requirement for their class size. So in order to ensure that we provide elective credit for our students, elective opportunities like art, music, and physical education, physical education being one of the ones that's definitely required, we have to make certain compromises in order to make sure that the number of teachers that we have in each school is going to meet not just the academic, but the also the arts and music and physical education needs of our students. So this is what makes our allotment so hard. Our students are in several small schools, and those teaching positions don't neatly divide up into all those small schools. Next slide. In addition, you can have two schools within a mile of each other. This example from Havelock shows you Arthur Edwards Elementary School and Graham A. Barden Elementary School, one serving almost 600 students and one serving about 250. And in those schools, for example, assistant principals are both numbering at one. School counselors, both schools have one school counselor, but you can see the difference in the workload based on how we are allotted. Just as an example, for assistant principals in North Carolina's allotment policy manual, we receive one month of employment for every 98 students. So if you looked at Arthur Edwards Elementary School, that school really only by allotment rates approximately six months of assistant principal employment, but it's not really reasonable to put only a half of an assistant principal in an elementary school. And so even less so for Graham Barden, where it looks to be about two and a half months of employment. of employment. Each of those schools has an assistant principal, but it's because we're using funds that are designated potentially for other purposes to do so. And again, these challenges are what we're trying to work on with our long-range facility master plan. You go to the next slide. It gives a longer rundown of the other costs to operate our schools. And these are average costs. They include, when you're seeing a, an employee, includes the salary and the benefits, so it's everything that it costs to pay for a personnel listed there. However, you can see that these numbers add up very quickly. If we had, for example, two schools that were small combined, then the, some of these costs would no longer be needed for these expenditures. We could use them to reduce class size further. We could use them to provide additional support staff, like social workers, and personnel that are going to have a positive impact on long-term student outcomes. Next slide. In addition, and this is, the next two slides are slides that I haven't shown you before, but they're slides that you're aware of, especially if you live in these two regions in our county. One is the Havelock area, where you can see Graham Barden, Arthur Edwards, and Gerganus, all within really about a square mile of each other. And those schools, two of them serving approximately three, 300 to 350 students, and then another serving about 600 students, you can see the significant imbalance there in enrollment. The same thing is happening on the next slide in the New Bern area, but it's much more complex. And a lot of those schools are, again, small schools. A lot of them, if you remember what was happening during Hurricane Florence, are schools that would have been underwater in the flood map that was provided by your manager during that time to illustrate the devastation of that time. And so, these schools are also, in addition to the fact that they are in close proximity, they can only serve a small amount of students, they are also very old. The average age of our schools in Craven County is 1971, and that means that the infrastructure in those buildings was not designed for a 21st century type of instruction. And so, as our board continues to work on their long-range facility master plan, we are happy to see that there may be some investment from our federal ESER dollars to help us with some of the HVAC upgrades. We're not so sure yet how it may be able to impact any other capital improvements. In the next slide, you see the impact of enrollment trends in Craven County, and you can see the different events that occurred in conjunction with those decreases in enrollment. You all know that we had approximately 1,000 students that were impacted or lost their homes or displaced from their homes during Hurricane Florence, and I believe that it was something like 4,500 housing units in Craven County that were lost during that time. Our students were significantly impacted, as were our staff. You can see the pandemic has had an impact, and a lot of those students are students that, interestingly, when we came back to school for our secondary students on the 19th, we're starting to see returns. And so, we're hoping to see that return even further this fall. If you look at the system-wide forecast, which is on the next slide, this is forecasting that was done several years ago, and you can see that there were predicted drops in enrollment in Craven County schools that really correspond to not only the drawdown at the base, which is going to hopefully increase, but also birth rates in our community. And when, for example, the top line, which is the green line, when that line falls and then begins to rise again, then you'll see a corresponding fall after that in middle grades and then a little bit later on in high school. And so, our enrollment is fluctuating, but really tending to drop because the population in Craven County is trending more towards a retirement population. The next page is really important to us, and it talks about our classified pay, and this is something that I've said in front of the Board of Commissioners several times. In fiscal year 2021, and so this is at the beginning of last year, our average classified pay was about $28,000. These are the staff that have been our custodians, our teacher assistants, our clerical staff. These are the folks who have been on the front lines, our bus drivers during the pandemic. In 2017, 18, that was at $25,000. These are wages that really do not allow a single person to live very comfortably, independently in many communities. You can see that every time the state has done an increase, for some reason, teachers and the state employees that are under the teachers' retirement system have not been included. Sometimes you'll see that there's a bonus, but that bonus does not contribute to their retirement earnings. We have increased classified pay for some of our job classes. We still have some to go. Our teacher assistants and our bus drivers are our next group to address. And that's something that we hope that we'll be able to start studying in the next several months. The next slide is our turnover rate. As you can see, we had trended down for a couple of years, very small increments of trending down, but this last year, as we began the pandemic, we saw an uptick. And this has been a very difficult number to change in Craven County schools, but it's not for a lack of effort towards training, supporting, and recruiting the highest quality applicants that we can to make sure that they are in front of our students. The next slide. You'll see on this next slide that there are a couple of blanks, and that's because unusual for this time of the year, when I stand up in front of the Board of Commissioners, we have not received projected benefits rate increases for our budget calculations, which is a bit scary, because if you look at the trends for retirement and for healthcare, you can see pretty large increases over the last several years. And so, you would assume that the trend would continue in that direction. So we are anxiously awaiting what those numbers will mean to both impact our local budget, but also to impact the use of our state funds. We have not yet received federal allotments. Our state budget is unknown and has been unknown for several years, as we've not really adopted a state budget. We are asking, though, that the Board of Commissioners maintain our fiscal year 20 and 2021 request. We obviously have seen effects on our enrollment due to COVID-19. We've also seen costs as a result of PPE training and really ventilation and mechanical system needs and upgrades that we hope to be able to leverage our ESER funds to improve. For the next two slides, you can go to the next slide. Our priorities are focused on the goals of our strategic plan. We know that our students have been absent from in-person instruction a significant portion of this school year, especially our students in the upper grades. And so, as a result, there are going to be some gaps that students bring back to us when they come back to school full-time in person. I do want to say, though, that our students, although they may not have learned every bit of the standards in the curriculum, they have learned a lot this last 18 months. And those lessons have to do with independence, resilience, time management, supporting their families in lots of cases, taking care of their siblings, and really filling the gap for their families in many instances. And so, we're also not just going to fill the gaps that have been carried forward into next school year. We're going to celebrate the learning that has been done by our students. You can see that we're going to continue to focus on literacy and math as we enter the next school year and closing those gaps in learning due to the loss of learning. I do want to make sure, though, that everyone understands that, for the most part, our students have been learning the entire time. We've seen challenges in specific subjects, in particular math. For any of you who may have children who are both in the room or listening, math has been particularly difficult, because having the proximity of your teachers to guide you through working through a problem is much more difficult through a screen, and also much more difficult when you can't be physically near that person. And so, we know that there are some opportunities to assist our students moving forward. We have summer school coming up this summer. We are very excited about the incredible response we've had to our teachers wanting to teach summer school. We need students to sign up for summer school, and so we are really working hard on that. So any of those students who are listening tonight, I'm not sure that they are, but if their parents are, we hope that they'll sign up for summer school if they need it. We're going to continue to work on maintaining our supplement and working some of the things in our budget to recruit our own. We have, as we've continued to analyze our data about our existing teachers and how some of them are coming into the profession, we're finding more and more that our most successful teachers are teacher assistants in our system. And so, trying to invest in those teacher assistants to grow into teaching positions is something that is part of our work this upcoming school year. Continuing to focus on helping our students to learn how to learn, continuing to focus on safety and security, of which this Board of Commissioners has been staunchly supportive of for all of our buildings. I'm very happy to say that, I think I heard this the other day, and I want to make sure that I'm correct, that all of our schools now have a school resource officer. And those folks have, although they are there to make sure that our students are safe, they are often a source of comfort and friendship for our young people, and also an example of an opportunity for a career. Next two slides. Three slides. So our considerations for this year, as I mentioned, is consistent and systematic literacy instruction and skill development. You may have heard that the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has really committed to the science of reading, which really is nothing more than recommitting to focusing on phonics, teaching students word study, how to decode words, letter sounds, putting those letters in, gather to make words, and then helping them to understand their reading much more deeply, and being able to approach a text that might seem complex to them, but because of those skills, they'll be able to take apart and understand much more effectively. I do want to say that this is not that we're throwing the baby out with a bathwater, it's just that we're making sure that everyone has the skills to teach those skills and standards to our students at a much higher level. But this is an area that I will say that Craven County Schools has led on, and this is work that we have been doing for the last two years, albeit during a hurricane and a pandemic. But we had already adopted a curriculum that really focused, especially in grades K through 2, on phonics and that type of instruction. And so, and we're starting to see some of the dividends of that investment. We're continuing to help our teachers through instructional coaching and helping to partner with our students and helping them gain the skills to learn how to learn, so that eventually they know how they learn best and can be more independent in pursuing any opportunity for learning. That we all know, as we move into our college and careers, are going to have to change jobs, change skills, and change our focus many times before we get the opportunity to retire. You can see, we're still waiting to find out what our benefits increases are, as I said that before. We'd like to continue our teacher supplement at 10%, continuing to include all of our instructional staff in that, and we are hoping to leverage our ESER 2 and 3 funds for improvements to schools, school mechanical systems, and closing learning gaps to continue to support blended learning, which we may have to continue with both for, hopefully for students who are capable of that type of learning, but definitely for all of our students in our classrooms. You can see it on the next slide, the revenue adjustments that we are budgeting, Impact Aid payments have decreased over time. We did, though, in the last budget year, receive more of our Impact Aid payments than we had projected. And so, you can see that that decrease since fiscal year 2013 has actually gotten a little bit better. We are increasing our Impact Aid technology revenue. As I mentioned, we're maintaining the request to the Board of County Commissioners, increasing our fines and forfeitures, and a slight reduction in our interest earnings. You'll see that we are appropriating about 1.46 million of our fund balance, and we are projecting that last year's fund balance will not be used substantially in this year's current budget. And you can skip to the two more slides. In our capital outlay budget, you will see that there are no Category 1 capital requests, but that, we have approximately 878,000 in capital in Category 1 projects that are below $100,000. A lot of that has to do with HVAC boiler repair, that's the top one, as well as continuing with replacing some of our vehicles, upgrading some of our wood bleachers. Our Board of Commissioners has helped us in the last three years to replace the gym floors in our three comprehensive high schools, which has now exposed some of the challenges with our bleachers in each of those gymnasiums. And so, we're working to make some improvements there. We are continuing with camera system upgrades on our buses and continuing with our device investment as well. If you look at the next slide, you'll see just the requests changes over the last five years, and you'll see that our request remains the same for fiscal year 2022. And finally, in the last slide, I'm just reviewing the same programmatic changes that we've had over the last 14, or not, over the last several years since 2014, which includes reorganization of our central services to serve our students and our schools. Although you see, for example, a reduction in nurses, this year, we've seen that increased because of the investment of our CARES Act funds in every school. When we've been able to recruit them, and I'm sure that you all have experienced the same thing at the Health Department, that recruiting nurses has been a significant challenge. We have the ability to have them in every building. It is just trying to recruit them has been a challenge during COVID. So you can see those programmatic changes, that we've tried to be good stewards, but also tried to make sure that the staff that we have serving our students at the central office as well as at the school level are directly related to improving our students and the outcomes there. And with that, that's all I have, and I'll be glad to take questions. I also have Ms. Denise Altman here, who is the finance officer, and she can take any questions as well.
All right, Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Smith, do you want to go first?
I really don't have a question. However, being a former member of the board and understanding what you are doing here in the difficult, and even sometimes hostile situation that you've had to work with, I want to commend you for the great job that I feel that you're doing.
Thank you.
And I want to commend you in front of the other Commissioners, so they all know how I feel.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's really in due, a great part to the partnership between our Board of Commissioners and Board of Education.
That is true, and I appreciate them too.
Yes.
All right, questions? Vice Chair?
Dr. Doyle, one of the slides, about halfway through, you pointed out the decline in enrollment.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering, do we have a handle on, over the last 10 years, how many students attend private schools that maybe didn't exist prior to that? In other words, we've got two fairly substantial private schools in our community and a couple of small ones.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea how many students that makes up those, does anybody, does anybody monitor that?
We do, we do look at that. We have not looked at it in the last 12 months, but we're happy to do so. A big proportion of our students are moving to homeschool. So we have seen an increase in private school attendance, but I would say our largest amount is in homeschool. We also are seeing an increase in virtual charter school enrollment. And so, this year, I think we've added, and Ms. Altman may have to correct me, but about 40 additional students this year in virtual charter school.
But we don't know how many students are being homeschooled, right?
We have an estimate, we do, because there is data that the Department of Public Instruction keeps. If you're a homeschool, you have to register with the Department of Non-Public Instruction, and so those numbers are available, and we try to track them. We, they're about a year old, and we need to renew those.
If you were to add up the homeschool, the charter school that you mentioned, and the private schools like Epiphany and New Bern Academy and whatnot, would those numbers total give us more students than we had 10 years ago? In other words, as that chart is going down for public schools, would the total be going up?
No, I would say that the total is going down, but we would be probably about 1,500, 15,000, 15,500. So again, because our, our population is, has less childbearing aged people, I think that our number of births has gone down, which is affecting enrollment everywhere, but we definitely have more students that are not in our public schools and are taking those other options. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll try to get some more specific data for you. And I'll try to get some more specific data for you.
All right, other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Superintendent, why do you feel we're losing those students to homeschooling and chartered schools?
I can't speak for all of them, and in terms of charter schools, the virtual charter schools are ones that are kind of puzzling to us, especially this year as we've had a virtual option. For those students that are going to private schools, I think some of it has to do with some of the flexibility that they see in those buildings, as well as they're seeing a different values in those schools that maybe their families want to pursue. A lot of those students are pursuing those schools for religious reasons.
Okay, other questions?
If I may ask, in this question, I've been asked ever since I've sat on this board, so it's nothing new. I've always been interested in what y'all have in your fund balance. And at the current time, what is the amount that you have?
Head, Ms. Altman.
The total is around eight million, but once you back out the amount that was allocated to balance the current year budget, we were running about 5.6 million.
5.6 of unassigned.
Unassigned.
Yes, sir.
I know I, I will say on behalf of this board, I know I can speak for all of us. We, you know, we have, it's our desire to always invest in education, and that's been a top priority of not only this sitting, seating board, but boards prior, to invest in education, not only in the public school system, also in our community college. But we do appreciate you coming to us and the Board of Education this year with sort of a flat budget, if you would say, of what you asked for last year. Just something, so all of our citizens know, though, that this board has already made a commitment verbally to invest in SROs in all of our schools. It was a desire by one of our municipalities here in Craven County not to pursue the arrangement, contract that y'all had in place. And I think this board desired that, we wanted to make sure we had SROs, SROs in every school. And for those that may not know, that is school resource officers. And so that is one thing that as a board, we will be discussing a lot during budget negotiations, but I think we're all committed that it's going to be in the budget. And it's not in here, but that, just so everybody knows, that that is an additional investment that we're going to be utilizing taxpayer dollars for. And it's a significant amount of money for the first year, so.
It absolutely is, and if I may, Chairman, that investment has to do with not just the personnel costs, but the costs that go with equipping a school resource officer, the benefits, as I described, salary and benefits for us, but there are additional benefits that law enforcement officers have to incur that include workers' compensation, which we have to pay for general employees, but they're not in the same level of safety concern in offices when they're seated behind a desk as they would be out on the road or in harm's way. And so in addition, there are different benefits that law enforcement officers receive as well. And so our Board of Education, our school community is very thankful for the investment of our Board of Commissioners in the safety and security of our students. And we have had this school year, a couple of opportunities to really realize how critical those resource officers are in our buildings, and we really sincerely appreciate them.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two years ago, before COVID hit and the pandemic crisis, the school system was engaged in what I will call a school realignment study. But as I recall, the shelf life of that was about 18 to 24 months, and then, of course, the world changed. Now that we are going back to a, either normal or a new normal, what are the plans to reengage on that school realignment study?
We are in the process of doing that now. Our Board of Education has had two different opportunities to review that data again, both in small group meetings and then at our, at a workshop in April, I believe. Our next steps are to go out to some of our community partners to get input from them about some of the opportunities we have to, for example, consolidate where we should be considering new construction and those types of things. And that will come to the Board of Commissioners, hopefully in June, maybe July, in an adopted plan that will include some of those decisions for not just realignment, but investment and capital improvements. As I mentioned during the presentation, Commissioner Mitchell, our schools are very old, 1971 being the average age of our schools, but we have schools that were born in the 50s. And so that really does make for some challenges in terms of, for example, during COVID, where many of our schools do not have central heating and air. And so the only air conditioning or air filtration is in each individual classroom, but not in hallways. And that really is not, that's not helped us during the hurricane, and it's not helped us during this pandemic either.
So the realignment study is not dead?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so it's still alive and coming back to us?
Yes, yes, and there will be an adopted plan that is forwarded to the Board of Commissioners, hopefully in the next several months.
Good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would just like to mention that we're talking about SRO officers, and in the first year, this is going to cost the county probably about $100,000 for each SRO officer.
Significant investment, Commissioner Martin, no doubt. Mr. County Manager, you got some comments?
No, just thank Dr. Doyle and her staff for working with us this year. It's been a great process. I will tell you my recommended budget, give you a little preview, because you'll get it next meeting. It does include all the SROs for every county. We worked for all the, for every school in the county. We worked really hard to get the revenue in. There are grants that come with each, a little bit different, depending on where you're at, but it is in the budget. It does require a tax increase, so just put that out there. I think the Board's well aware of that, coming in from our workshops, so.
All right, and as always, we want to offer to our Vice Chair, the Board of Education, you have any comments you'd like to bring to us?
No, I would just like to thank you all for, it's been a tough year. It's been a tough year for us, it's been a tough year for the hospitals, it's been a tough year for the community, but I really appreciate the support that you've always given our board. And I look forward to a better year next year. A better year, but there is so much to celebrate in our system. Sometimes, you know, the good stuff gets lost in the noise, but there are so many wonderful teachers who have worked in it. As I stood in the hall, I heard story after story of successes from our students this week, for this year, as they were just in the hall, just anecdotal stuff that you hear out there, that I wish everybody could hear, because it's been a challenging year, but our folks have really risen to it and have done phenomenal work.
Thank you. All right, no other questions? Dr. Doyle, we appreciate you and others coming this evening, appreciate this budget. Commissioners, next, we have before us a presentation by the Craven County College President, Dr. Raymond Stats. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. I've got with me our Chief Finance Officer, Jim Millard. This is Jim's fourth fiscal year budget, and he's still waiting for his first normal one. And so with that, I'll get started. Slide, please. I start every briefing to the Commissioners by first saying thank you. We are a very fortunate community college statewide among the 58 that has always enjoyed over our 54 years now tremendous support from y'all, and we never forget to be grateful for that. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight by going back through fiscal '21, some of the significant infrastructure projects that we've done with county money, some of the program initiatives that are underway, and of course, no discussion of this past year is complete without talking about COVID. I'll touch briefly on the five-year facilities plan, which we update every year, in particular for our priorities for this forthcoming year. And then I want to spend a couple moments talking about college enrollment and some of the trends we're seeing. I think you'll find that very interesting, and it'll explain a little bit what's behind our fiscal '22 county budget request. Next slide. We've had a lot of projects, and I'm going to show you quite a few pictures over the next couple of minutes, but we opened three new buildings in the last year. The Small Business Center last August, the Diesel Garage in January, and the Law Enforcement Training Center in March, all of those on the Volt Center property. In addition, last year, we renamed or rechristened our Student Center after David Ward, our long attorney who retired about a year and a half ago after 52 years of service to the college. He was there the day they hired Thurman Brock. In fact, I believe Mr. Ward was hired before Dr. Brock was. So we weren't able to have a ceremony, but I can tell you, Mr. Ward was thrilled with that, and we will get him out on the campus here in the next few months and make that a little more official. We also opened up our new Academic Support Center in January. And then out on the Havelock Campus, we redid all the flooring in the red building. That building is about 18 years old, 19 now, and so it was due for refresh on the floors. And then across our campuses, we've been doing a steady spate of upgrades. Next slide. So what you're seeing on the left is the city garage, I'm sorry, that is the, yeah, that's the city garage. Things move fast. That is the only project of the four buildings on the Volt Campus for which we had any capital expenditure. That's 6,000 square foot facility, cost the college $170,000. So we now have four buildings on that site for a grand total of 170 and about 12,000 square foot of workforce development space. So that has been a godsend to the college, and we're very appreciative to the county for the support that you've made and intend to continue through the coming years, as well as the City of New Bern for the tremendous amount of infrastructure investment and a lot of sweat equity that went into making that happen. To the right is the Small Business Center. We moved that down there as we examined the synergies that were available with the Trades Building. Most of the small business entrepreneurs are folks that are trained in various trades and other small business. It made sense that if they got their initial trade certifications on that site, as they progressed from apprentice to masters, that they might then in turn become entrepreneurs and train on that same site. So we're very pleased to have that on the campus. Many of you were with us, next slide. When we had the official ribbon cutting for the law enforcement simulator, that was a five-year effort, and one of our Commissioners was at the forefront of that, took a lot of equity. This was one of those projects where we got together, we knew what we wanted, and found a roadblock, typically it was money, and we adjourned, and then a few months later, got back together again and tried another angle. And we kept doing that cycle repeatedly until finally the intent and the funds matched together, and this spring we opened it up. Already, we've put 82 officers through training in that building from the New Bern and Riverbend Police Departments, over 300 training hours. And the county sheriff officers, deputies will begin their first training a little later this month, and I just spoke with Sheriff Hughes, they're very excited about getting that underway. Next slide. Over on the main campus, we opened the Academic Support Center. For the folks that work in that office, it was the end of a four-year odyssey of moving from swing space to swing space. They started on the second floor of Barker Hall, got moved out when we redid the library. They went down to the first floor and got moved out again when we redid that floor for our new First Stop. They spent the last year and a half over in Kelso Hall, and now they are finally in their final home in what used to be the First Stop. What makes this important for our students is this puts all of our academic support in one place, tutoring, supplemental instruction, academic counseling, peer mentoring, as well as non-academic counseling as well we're doing in there. So this was a huge win for our schools. Next slide. The red building got a little bit of a facelift or a floor lift, if you will. Carpets had pretty much long since gone past their prime, and the hard tile replacements have moved to, is it VC vinyl composite? Tile, VCT, there we go, which is a much more durable, low-maintenance tile. For example, you don't have to take a buffer to it and put wax on it, which is very, very important. If you've got 50s and 60s buildings where you're doing that on the Torazo, it's a lot less work for our maintenance folks, and it looks much, much better. We also did a minor renovation in there, having opened the STEM building, that freed up a little space in that building, and we now actually have a student lounge on that campus, very badly needed. Next slide. One of the things that has been missing from all of our campuses, if you've been on them, is wayfinding. To be able to find a building and know where to go is quite the challenge, and we're working on solving that. All of the exterior signs have now been replaced on the perimeter of the campus, and next year, we'll complete that project by putting interior signs around the inside perimeter of the campus so that you'll have a better place to go. Interestingly, the most popular element of these signs is on the backside where the new Craven logo is large as life. Folks have really liked that. That was a surprise, we didn't know that that would be such a highlight. Next slide. It's been an interesting year, if you're an IT person. Jim, he's shaking his head because that's the world he came from. Local governments and higher education are targets, much the way the Department of Defense was 15 to 20 years ago. In fact, just last week, the Washington DC law enforcement was hit with ransomware and taken down. And in the last three years, eight colleges of the 58, community colleges in North Carolina, had their systems completely taken down, in some cases for weeks at a time. It is real business. And so Jim and the IT team have gone to great lengths with firewalls and filters and training and proxy IPs. In fact, today, about half the college got a message from me, or at least it looked like a message from me, asking them to click open a document that I requested be sent to them. And I think we had zero actually click it. We, we're getting better at that. But the concept is defense in layers, but it's expensive and time-consuming, but we are so far keeping up. Back in 2018, we learned, and Jim, I think you were just coming on board, we were actually one of the first colleges in the system to get attacked by ransomware. The good news is, we only had two computers online that week because Hurricane Florence was coming through. So we had exactly two computers taken down, and the ransomware folks were out of luck. But that's just how close sometimes you run it. We've also been fortunate with CARES Act funding and other federal dollars that have been coming in to significantly increase our wireless capacity. Bandwidth, as you might imagine, has been at a premium with so many of our students going online, and we have been keeping pace with that, with our upgrades. The Volt Center has been all about partnerships. You've heard me talk about the City of New Bern and of course yourself, but we've also had Golden Leaf, C1A, I'm going to forget people, it's going to be terrible, the Bait Foundation, even the College Foundation has had a role in this. But what's been more surprising is the partnerships in business and industry, and manufacturing has really led the way with Bosch, Moen, Dredura, Chatsworth, and half a dozen others that have set up four different production lines. And we've solved the real problem in our manufacturing segment. Almost 100 people have been hired by Bosch directly out of that building. We are helping them solve their workforce shortages. Overall, in the Volt Center, we've had over 1,100 completers in two years and 205 verified jobs. And when I say verified, those are people that had a job offer in hand when they left their building. Many more of those 1,100 had jobs shortly thereafter. And the Volt Center, about 20% of the population going through there are walking from the adjacent neighborhoods. So we're getting done what we intended to get done by putting that in that location. In two weeks, we celebrate graduation with Fleet Side Readiness Center East, two cohorts, one that graduated last year and had their ceremony put on hold, and then this year's cohort, a total of 49 graduates that spent 10 months with the college, getting paid full-time as Fleet Readiness Center employees and getting a long-term certificate from us. And Mark Mino has graciously agreed to be our keynote speaker for that event, and we're very appreciative of that. But another great partnership as we get ready for the F-35 to deploy to our area. Next slide. We've modeled after Winston Churchill, who said, "Stay calm and carry on." One of the messages that I have keep, kept pounding forward is that our college has stayed open. That is not true for all 58, it's not true for the universities, and it's not necessarily true across the country. But we have stayed open, and we've stayed safe throughout. Our incidence rates are below the national, the state, and even the county rates, and we've had no cluster events. Now, I caution to take too much credit because there's an element of good luck that goes with that, but of course, good luck also comes with preparedness, and we're happy for that. But that's been very important, one of the things that has come out of that as I move to the enrollment impacts, is that we've managed to maintain fairly steady enrollment this year, and what that means in terms of our state dollars, because we are funded based on our enrollment from the prior year, is that our college is not facing the potential for any layoffs this year, irrespective of the state budget that goes through. We are healthy, and a lot of that has to do with staying open. But there's been a pretty neat change, I don't know whether it's neat, I guess, that has happened with the methods of delivery. When we started the spring semester before COVID, our seated students comprised about 53.8% of the enrollment percentage. That is now 26.4%, and the rest is online and hybrid. That's been a complete flip in the last 12 months. And you may recall when I spoke to you about a year ago, we made the initial changeover in a two-week span. We closed for two weeks, the faculty rewrote all the curriculum, figured out where all the students were and where they had to pick up online, and we rolled. 95% of our students last spring finished on time, the remaining 5% finished in the next three to four weeks. So we've managed to come up. Where we've seen the greatest enrollment impacts, well, you might expect, applied programs, welding, machining, all of those types of degree programs were spaces at a premium, where classes where we might have 12 to 15 students were limited to six to nine because of spacing requirements. And so we lost some enrollment there. And so we lost some enrollment there. Interestingly though, workforce development, we're one of 11 colleges in the system that saw an increase, 5% in our case, and that is largely due to that space we had over on the Volt Campus, where we were able to space out those students in a 7,500-foot trade building last year. So we're very pleased about that. We kept going with college events. This year was the 11th Annual Community Fabric Awards. We did it online. It was a full-scale Hollywood-style production at low cost. I think we spent a grand total of 3,000 on it, which was actually less than we normally spend on the food. And we were able to congratulate not only last year's winners, but also this year's winners. Ms. Carol Maddox as the individual leader, Tom Pike and Chick-fil-A as our Business of the Year, and our own Ricky Meadows as our Educator of the Year, who by the way was featured this week on Congressman Murphy's Constituent Highlights. Really need to see Ricky there. And Ricky's been pulling double duty. Our Dean of the Havelock Campus went into retirement this spring, and Ricky on about 24 hours' notice said, "I'll do that job." And so he's been running the Havelock Campus plus his own department for the last few months. We will welcome a brand-new Dean of the Havelock Campus on July 1st, and she's actually a returning member of the Craven family, Ms. Tanya McGee, who was the department chair for us about a decade ago. Commencement will be drive-in style again, and we're going to add some flair to it. Last year, we did an impromptu parade around the perimeter of the campus. It's about a mile drive. It's going to be a little less impromptu this year. We're going to set up stations all the way around the perimeter with different groups of college faculty and staff, and that's where the party's going to happen, because we're not walking across the stage like we traditionally do. So they're going to drive across the campus and get to greet different groups of folks. So we're looking forward to that. We're starting early because of the heat. We'll start the ceremony at 8:00 AM on the 15th of May. Next slide. This is where Jim earns his keep. This is the next year of our five-year plan. Back to floors again, this time in the Bosch AMC. It's hard to believe that that building is over a dozen years old already. Epoxy takes a lot of wear and tear, so we will be redoing the floors there. Over in Bender and Purdue, the perennial HVAC upgrade process. We've got 11 buildings now, I think, if my count's right. So with a 10- to 15-year life on HVAC, you're typically replacing one or doing major upgrades every year with a couple. We'll be replacing the chiller in Kelso Hall, that's one of our oldest buildings on the campus. And then of course, on all of the campuses, we'll continue to keep up with the roofs. Flat roofs require a lot of maintenance. I would love to have peaked ones, but they're expensive to build. So we are keeping our flat roofs in good repair, parking lots, roads, and sidewalks, and then of course, painting and grounds. And if you haven't been on the campus, I encourage you, this is a very special time of year on the main campus as we get ready for commencement. The grounds are green, the flowers are planted, the trees have leafed out, and the buildings look great. The average age on that campus is about 35 to 40 years, but the average engineering age of those buildings is about 20. And that is because of the continuous support that you've given us and the way we've been able to keep up with the maintenance. Next, I'd like to look at some enrollment slides. Enrollment, there we go. I'm an analyst by trade, so I see these things, and then I don't like what it tells me because it goes against what my gut tells me. And if you look at this slide from a distance, you'll see that it appears that over the last 10 years, enrollment has declined at the college. And indeed, across the country, community colleges overall, enrollment has declined. But I took a deeper dive into this data and got some surprising, or not-so-surprising results, at least from what my gut told me. First of all, that year, all the way to the left, is the last year of the Great Recession. We were in boom times during that, so if you pull that one off. And certainly, COVID-19 is an unusual year, so we pull that one off on the other side. Now, basic skills is something we don't control in terms of who comes, but also we've changed the way we do basic skills. Those are the students that we work with who are not college-ready. And we have done a great deal of effort over the last few years to integrate them into our main curriculum with something called RISE, where we do their prerequisites concurrent with their actual college courses. So those numbers you see in basic skill, part of that decline is that reengineering. So then you take the basic load for the college, workforce development and curriculum, and that's that number you see on the bottom, 3149, eight years ago. And today, prior to the pandemic, 3060, almost even. And in fact, if you account for the reduction in the population of Craven County, we're steady over 10 years. So what's that mean? Next slide. What that means is, you think everything would be the same, but it's not. And that's because the nature of our students and who we are teaching is dramatically different. Our profile is different. We've seen traditional university transfer continue to decline year after year for our adult students, but we've seen our applied sciences, healthcare, manufacturing, and those continue to increase. And then this graph you're seeing here is the share of credit hours that are for workforce development. 10 years ago, around 12%. Today, 19%. That's a pretty big jump in the proportion to the college. And the thing about workforce development is, there are about three to four students it takes to get the same FTE as it does for a curriculum student. The way to think about that is, if I have an English classroom, I pack 25 of them in the classroom, I get out a textbook, maybe Emily Dixon, I write on the whiteboard, they all leave, another teacher comes in, teaches calculus with their textbook, another 25 students, same whiteboard. Of workforce development, I need 2,000 square feet to teach carpentry, which is going to have eight students. Another 2,000 square feet to teach plumbing, eight students. Another 2,000 square feet, and you see the pattern. So as we increase from 12 to 19%, once again, the Volt Center has been a godsend to us to be able to get that rolling. Now, the one thing that has kept university transfer constant in its overall numbers has been our relationship with the high schools. Next slide. We were late getting into the CCP compared to a lot of our peers. Really didn't get started with the high schools till 2015. My first year here, we had 96 students enrolled for all of high school, not including the early colleges. That number last year was 654. Now, you see that's a slight dip from last year. That's one of those where you have to do the deep dive, because it turns out that those 654 were taking a lot more courses last year than they were the year before. And so even though we had less students, we had dramatically greater percentage of enrollment. 11.7% of our total curriculum FTE is now coming from the high schools. And when you add in the early colleges, which is 8.4%, 20% of all of our university transfer enrollment is coming through the high schools. So we have a very strong and growing partnership there that is becoming very, very important to our college, but more importantly, more important to our youth. Finally, I'd like to present our budget request for the forthcoming year. Our personnel request in line two, of course, the green is where we started from last year. Line two, you'll see our personnel request is fairly small, and that is because the state legislature has not authorized a pay raise in three years for the colleges. And of course, we request our county portion of the pay raises in arrears, so you are seeing relatively zero for that piece, and the costs are in the retirement and our health insurance costs that have taken place, and that's about it. Now, that'll probably be the main item for next year. The legislature seems to be in a mood to maybe correct the last couple of years, so different bills are hopeful that we'll see a little more of an uptick in salaries. Our operating request of $71,000 is being driven by a dramatic increase of insurance costs. Those of you who are homeowners have seen those costs go up. We're no different, both in liability and in infrastructure. And telecommunications has gone up. Again, if you're a Suddenlink customer, you've seen those costs go up. And again, we're not immune to that, and that's driving most of those costs. Last August, I came to you to speak to the Volt Center's expansion, and the three buildings we did open, the number I quoted at that time was 72,000, and that remains today a good number, to give us a total request on our operating allocation of $4.101,425 million. Our capital allocation is the same baseline that we've requested every year since fiscal 15. You may recall, last year, we took a little bit of a haircut to help out with the capital. I'm very pleased to report that thanks to federal funding, we have made all of that up and a little more. So we're pretty pleased about that, and so we're back to our baseline going forward. Bringing our total request to about $4.6 million, which represents about a 3.9% increase from last year. And that is reflective that our footprint has grown by about 15% in the last five years, and we're pretty much keeping pace with that. And with that, once again, I'll conclude by saying thank you. Next slide. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Liner.
Doctor, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. I've got a couple of questions here. How come such a big jump in your legal services?
You know, that's one of those things we don't control. We had some legal work to do with our aviation program, brand-new program. We had about half a dozen public information requests, which we typically run through the attorneys. And so that can be a random event, and we typically base our funding on last year's experience.
Okay, so 66% increase in that one.
Yeah, it was a tough year.
Okay. Explain to me, I don't understand, what is FT Services/Maintenance/Skills/CR? I ask that because that increased by 66,000, but then you decreased Supervisor Service/Maintenance/ Skilled/CR. What's?
Well, let Jim, what you're doing, those are personnel shifts, and the short answer is, we've moved some supervisory personnel into non-supervisory positions.
Yes, sir. All those lines, if you follow it all the way down, it kind of bounces around and balances out, because what those are are full-time folks that are being moved around, being paid out of a different fund, or they're now, they're going from a 29-hour to a 40-hour. It just depends on where we are. But if you look down, it will actually balance out. So those larger numbers up there will kind of come back out of it, and you'll see decreases in numbers below there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your electrical, you get your electrical, I guess, from New Bern. Is this increase due to New Bern's mistake of not reading you properly, or is this just because of the three new buildings?
Sir, we had a little bit, we were involved in a little bit of that, but it was, we took care of it, it was good to go. But the, overall, yes, we do have a little bit larger footprints, we do have a little bit larger electric bill.
And our Havelock Campus is Duke, right?
It depends on where we are, what year, how bad things were that year. But really, really hot, obviously, just like the home, we'll spend a little bit more. Really, really cold, we'll spend a little bit more on the heat. So it just kind of varies, but we pretty much stay about the same, but there has been some increases this year.
Yeah, this is, you know, 36,000. I mean, it's still a small amount compared to a $900,000 bill.
$900,000 budget, yeah.
Yeah, on that. Next, I guess, getting back to the footprint side. You made a statement up here that your seating capacity prior to COVID was at 56%.
Oh, no, that was seated students.
Okay.
On the curriculum side, right.
Right. Now it's down to 26%.
26, yeah.
Percent.
This year.
How long do you see that going out? Because that should then reduce your footprint.
Well, you would think so, but where we're losing it is all the English classrooms. I'm not losing it on the workforce development side of the house. Now, I will tell you that I have, we're doing a space utilization study for this fall, and that will largely involve Purdue, the Business and Information Technology, and Oringer, where we hold most of our transfer classes. And we're going to see what we are and we aren't using, because one of the challenges we have is, we don't have enough space for health programs, which is in Purdue. And part of the reason we don't have enough room is, we have transfer classes going on in that building. So the first thing we're going to do is hopefully leverage that reduction in seated classrooms and get transfer folks out of that building so we can increase health sciences.
So do you see the e-learning becoming the norm as far as that?
I don't think we're going to get back to 56% seating, but I'd also don't think we'll stay at 26. And that is the unknown at this point. I think what we're seeing this fall, but it's very, very early, is that's jumping into the 30s instead of 20, but there's still a lot of hesitation in registering. It will be different, but we don't know by how much.
Yes, sir.
Most of the literature I'm reading is saying maybe 10%.
Chairman, thank you, sir.
All right, ma'am. Other questions from the Board?
You said that you will move students and that will give you capacity to put others there.
Hmm.
Are you telling us that you have students waiting for spaces that's not able to take those spaces?
Well, I'll give you an example in the healthcare. We've been working with Carolina East to increase our capacity for nurses. And we're in a position right now, we've moved from 40 to 53, but we need to get to 70.
So do you have the 30 out?
The first piece, we've got them in, we fit them in, we got creative with our scheduling, but to go to the next step, we're going to need a couple more rooms. And so we're going to do some shifting around.
Do you have students asking for those?
Typically, yes. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We do not admit all, that's why it's a competitive program. We do not admit every nurse that asks to join us.
I understand.
And we have those limitations in welding, too. It doesn't seem like we can buy enough welders to satisfy that demand.
While I'm speaking, I would speak to the Volt, the one that has to do the police department. I attended that ribbon cutting.
Yes.
And that is very impressive. I think that is really an asset to the community.
I'm looking forward to seeing how much. We've got 80, like I said, 82 students have already gone through. Sheriff Hughes is very excited about getting his turn in there.
It was exciting to do it.
I think it'll teach not only our law enforcement, you know, Jim and I come from the military, you train, 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 train. That's critically important. But it also is a community asset to understand what police officers are doing during their daily business and understanding, just help those interactions get better.
All right, any other questions from the Board? Mr. County Manager?
No, just thank Dr. Stats and Jim. Really appreciate you guys' assistance. Thank you.
We do thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
All right, Commissioners, next on the departmental matters, we have Sheriff Hughes with us. We have two items for you. Good evening, sir.
Sheriff, Commissioners. Everybody's well. This evening, I've got a, Chairman, Commissioner, I've got two items here. One is our sheriff's pension line increase. This amount is one of those that's just hard for us to budget each year because it changes every year. And in talking with our finance director, trying to figure out what's the best way to do this, there is no way for really, for us to budget exactly what it's going to be. I think we'd budgeted originally that it would be about 8,000, and this is based on just the sheriff's pensions throughout the state. So we are requesting a line increase, basically from, we budgeted 8,000. The remaining amount that we will need is $7,079. The invoice that we got from the Department of Justice is $15,078.68, which is owed.
Take a motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the next item is the OJT Bulletproof Vest Grant for matching funds. The budget amendment is, in reference to the grant funds that will be utilized by my office to purchase bulletproof vests for foreign personnel. We've been awarded $4,383.22 from OJP to purchase the bulletproof vest for partial reimbursement. This grant will reimburse the sheriff's office 50% of each vest, the total, the amount given. I think what we're asking for is the exact amount that we were.
Chairman, so move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Mr. Sheriff, while we have you here, if I may, ask you a question, I know some of our Commissioners might have something, and you might want to address our board also since we have you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've received some concerns over the last few months about the westbound lane when you come off of the Glen Burnie exit heading towards my way.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know this evening, when I came into town, I came in a little early for another meeting, and there was a two-car wreck there. I know there's been some discussion in the past, but I don't, I haven't seen any action by DOT or whoever's supposed to be doing it. Could you give us an update and maybe share with us, is there anything that we as a Board of Commissioners can do to maybe help and assist with that problem?
Yes, sir, um, this is an area of the roadway that, um, in my opinion, having traveled that roadway for many years now, and every day when I go to my office, I travel it. Was not really a, a big problem there until the most recent repaving that we've had done on US seventy. And, uh, once we started noticing a drastic increase in collisions there, as soon as the road got wet or water started to pool in that area, it's become apparent that there was a couple areas and there were water will stand on the roadway during a moderate rain. And very rarely will you ride through there, especially westbound after you get off the Glen Burnie exit onto seventy, where cars are not going into that center divide railing area. Uh, so many where I've lost count, uh, so much where I've instructed my deputies when they come through there, as, as well as all my staff, to decrease your speed drastically as you come through there because there's a known problem. I know DOT has looked at it, uh, I have made numerous calls out there to the engineer to let them know that there is a problem. That portion is technically in the city limits of New Bern, however, our citizens are wrecking their vehicles and getting hurt. And I would say, dare say, hundreds of thousands of dollars in injuries and property damage that have occurred there, not to mention what it's costing DOT to get out there every time it rains and repair that. My recommendation would be if this board would be so, would, would see fit to do so, possibly a letter from this board to the DOT engineer, maybe from the Commissioners as well as our County Manager and myself, indicating that this is a, a public safety issue, and we would like it to be looked at and addressed if possible. I've also talked and, I've talked with our, uh, some of the aldermen in New Bern, and they agree. And, uh, I was told today that if y'all were to put some letter together, that they would like to sign on to it as well and use the same verbiage to go, verbiage to go forward, in hopes that we could get DOT to take a serious look at this and possibly do whatever it will take. If it's repaving, so be it, uh, what I don't want is there to be loss of life there, and then they decide something needs to be done.
All right, Commissioner, if it's all right, uh, during Commissioner comments, I'm, would bring it up and we, if y'all would like to discuss it and maybe take action there. I appreciate what you shared with us, and, uh, at that time, we could take it up. All right, other questions for?
Chairman, uh, Sheriff, last weekend, you had a, um, large group of sheriffs from around the state who came to Craven County, and a lot of them brought their wives, and probably some brought their husbands, I would imagine, but at any rate, um, well, there's some women sheriffs.
Maybe, maybe one of them brought their husband, yes, sir.
Um, you had it at the Convention Center, and I think that's the first big event we've had there since, uh, we've reopened, isn't it, Jack, or one of the first?
Sir, it feels like forever, but yes, it's Hurricane Florence, the first, well, no, since the Main Street, which was the last group we had before COVID.
Okay, yeah.
We had one big event.
At any rate, I'm just curious, how did that go, and what was the result of your, your weekend?
Well, thank you, yes, it was, um, it was something, uh, office worked really hard to get the sheriffs here. Wherein, you know, when, when we talk about where we're going to go as sheriffs for our conference, um, you know, we look at a bunch of different locations, and unfortunately, you know, we got out of rotation the year the flood came through. Uh, so we compete against Atlantic Beach, Wilmington, Raleigh, Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston, Asheville, Cherokee for the, for this event, and we hold three of them a year. And typically, anywhere from three hundred to four hundred and twenty-five will attend when you have sheriff, staff, families, uh, vendors, that sort of thing. And, and here, uh, we had almost three-quarters of the sheriff in the state come to New Bern. That's numbers that we don't typically see. Everybody was excited about coming here to New Bern. We had a Spouses Day event on Monday, where Tryon Palace opened up, uh, the History Center, and we had a luncheon for the wives at Persimmons on the waterfront. And, um, all the feedback that I have gotten from all of the sheriffs, spouses, the business owners here in town, restaurants, uh, just people walking on the street as they were very pleased that we were here, that Craven County was chosen, our facility, uh, if I could just take a second, um, you know, I want to thank, first of all, our, our County Manager and Chairman for coming there and welcoming the sheriffs on a Saturday morning. They came there and spoke, saw a lot of wonderful things about the sheriffs and how much they appreciate our, our work and relationship, and how important it was to the county that we came to Craven County, when we could have gone to all these other places. And, and they were not disappointed, and I thank y'all for coming there. Uh, our Director, uh, Tarsia McCoy and her staff there at the Convention Center, I cannot say enough good things about them. They worked really hard, long hours, and to try to make all of us happy and accommodate everything that we needed, uh, we did not go without. And once again, the, the positive comments were just, uh, wonderful, so much that, uh, there's a very good possibility that we will be coming back here yearly in the spring, just because of how well this thing went. Craven County TDA Executive Director Melissa Riggle, uh, for tremendous help with just organizing the, the Spouses Day event, uh, and getting them from point A to point B, uh, you know, whether it was New Bern Trolleys or the Tryon Palace Tour. Our United States Marine Corps Color Guard during the presentation of colors, uh, bent over backwards to help us, it was extremely professional, and I thank our Corps and our partnership we have with them. The Doubletree Courtyards, Chief Smoke from the Flame, uh, for feeding us. Uh, all the sheriffs were very, very impressed, and, uh, once again, we hope it to make it a, a, an annual event, and of course, my staff, uh, very long nights. Uh, of course, we posted people at the two hotels and the Convention Center around the clock, just to make sure everybody needed, uh, what they, uh, needed at any time. So, uh, I know you all are very proud of our county employees at that Convention Center, and once again, uh, we could not have done this without them. Just, and it, it being the first big event since this thing, uh, just the unknown were no issues whatsoever. And I, I, as a sheriff, I am very thankful and I was very proud, uh, of what, uh, our Convention Center did and everybody that stepped up, so.
Good news.
Thank you.
All right?
Good news.
Any other Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Liner?
Sheriff, I got one, I've read your reports that came out today, and I got one I want to talk to you about, and that's the ankle bracelets. You got thirty-nine people on the ankle bracelets.
Yes, sir.
How many of those thirty-nine are paying? The reason I ask that, because I've been told out on the street, we have a new judge now that's waiving these fees.
That is, uh, that is correct, we, we have a, a judge that is, um, waiving the fees at times. Uh, and I get that that's their prerogative and they can do that, uh, however, I've got an issue with it when these clients are paying attorneys thousands of dollars, but yet their fee to be on the ankle bracelet is waived. And that is revenue that, uh, my office should be showing in our, in our numbers, and no, this isn't a money-making, it's more of a cost avoidance. However, we look to increase our revenue whenever we can, and, and they've got the money to pay an attorney, and they've got the money to be on that ankle bracelet.
Well, when we started this, before your time and everything else, we had talked with the Chief Judge and everything else, and that was well-understood that we were going to make a big investment into this and putting people in this, and now I just think it's time that the County Manager and the Chair, we may want to reach out to the Chief Judge and find out what's going on, because I'm in agreement with them, if they can pay some of these high attorney fees and got it on there, but, I mean, this is the first time we've had this issue. And I'm, that's why I asked how many we had in there, because it's going to be a significant hit to you.
Well, and I did, I spoke, uh, soon as I started seeing that there was a, a trend, uh, I reached out to the Chief District Court Judge immediately to voice my opinion on it.
And I think we may, we may want to push this a little bit further.
First I had heard about it, so thank you. Thank you for making us aware. All right, any other Commissioners?
Chairman, you, you did mention, y'all did bring up the SROs, and I did want to comment on that very quickly. Uh, I thank y'all, uh, for stepping up and, you know, having this, it's, it's in my budget. And, uh, I will take full responsibility for any tax increase that will take place as a result of us putting SROs in our schools to protect our future, our greatest asset, that's our children, and our educators, so I commend y'all, and I, I please take a hard look at that. It's something that has to be done.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Sheriff was out at Fairfield Harbor and had a little meeting there, and, uh, he made it plain that, uh, these SRO, uh, are very important to the schools, and that, uh, there would be a tax increase possible because of it, so.
I don't, I don't think we can afford not to do it, Chairman, but if I may, again, this is the one you don't need to fall on your sword on, you know, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but this belongs to the board, the board owns this one. I mean, you take enough hit, hit as it is and everything else, we own this and we should stand up to this one. This is ours.
Okay. All right, County Manager, anything? Sheriff, we appreciate you, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you very much, thank y'all for your support.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, next on the agenda tonight is the appointments. You have your pending appointments, are there any nominations from anyone for any of those tonight?
Yes, uh, pendants.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on one of the pending appointments?
Yes, please do.
I received a letter, and I, I didn't think about it, and while they were here, but from Ms. O'Connor with the Aging Board. She wanted to relay to me the importance of the Regional Aging Advisory Board appointment. I, I believe it has, there's, Commissioner Liner, there's a regional aging board, like, there's a local aging board. Um, I believe the person that was on there from our local aging board is no longer on the local board, so we need to take someone from the, that board and put them on the big board. So, maybe we could work together with Clayton, I, I think Clayton would be someone, um, Commissioner Liner, I was thinking about, that might be willing to serve.
Can you bring that back to us next meeting? Okay, did you have another one, Commissioner Liner?
Not under the pending, I got the current.
All right, here are no Commissioners have nothing under pending, all right, under current. We have there the Craven County EMS Board, you've got, um, a resignation there, you have in your packet an applicant of Candace Pereira who seeks appointment to fill this vacancy. What's the desire of the Board of Commissioners?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Ms. Pereira.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Pereira, I don't have another, not any other additional nominations. Here are none, we will accept her by acclamation. Next is the, uh, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. You have there first Michael Bright, who seeks reappointment.
I don't know him, but I'll, I'll reappoint him if he wants to be reappointed.
Yeah, let go.
All right, we have.
I'd like to nominate Steve Coffey, replace Rick Zachody, he's been his backup, he wasn't at the meetings.
Okay, are there any other nominee, go ahead.
I want to, I want to table that until.
Which one now?
The appointment of Rick, uh, Steve Coffey.
Okay, you want to hold that?
Table it until next meeting.
All right, so we're going to table that one. All right, go back to Mr. Bright, are there any other nominations? Here are none, he's accepted by acclamation, okay? Then we got the, uh, JCPC Council, Mr. Aaron Whitford seeks reappointment.
I'll nominate Mr. Whitford.
Okay, we have a nomination, any additional? He's set by acclamation, then we have, uh, Jordan Sawyer, who seeks appointment to fill the juvenile defense attorney seat. This County Attorney, you know this gentleman?
Uh, no, sir, I do not.
Do not?
Mr. Chair, he is with the Public Defender's Office, which is a good representation for the sport.
So you recommend that?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a nomination? All right, we got a nomination, any additional nominations? Here are none, he's accepted by acclamation. All right, then you have the Craven County Board of Adjustment. You have, uh, two individuals that seek reappointment, Mr. Thayer McCabe and Mr. John Brazelton.
Can we nominate just one?
All right, give me the one that you want.
John Brazelton?
Okay, we got the name of John Brazelton?
I'll nominate two.
In there, McCabe.
All right.
I'll nominate. I'll wait for that one.
The other one.
Okay.
I'll nominate the other guy.
The other guy, all right, are there any additional nominations? Here are none, we will set those by acclamation. And then you have the Local Emergency Planning Committee, all wish to be reappointed, you have Ronnie Wims, you have Judy Antry, Joe Barker, Tom Glasgow. You have one there who has retired, they will be submitting, uh, another name at a different time, and then at the bottom, you have Brian Bradley Senior. What's the desire of the board?
I would reappoint them.
All right, we have a nomination for one, two, three, four, five names there, are there any additional nominations? Here are none, they all will be accepted by acclamation. And you have on the back, uh, next sheet of the coming terms expiring in May, so please take note of those. Any other nominations to be brought before the board? None. Here are none. Next, we have the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Graydon, good evening, sir.
Chairman, uh, Commissioners, good evening, have, uh, three items for your consideration. Uh, this evening, all three involve county-owned property acquired in tax foreclosure process. The first item is, uh, property located at two forty-three B James Street, uh, out in Vanceboro. Uh, this is an initial offer, if the Board accepts it this evening, we'll put it through the upset bid process. And when that's concluded, the Board will be able to review, uh, the final bid. Uh, the offer amount is three thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure totaled two thousand, eight hundred, ninety dollars and seventy-seven cents, and the tax value is six thousand, uh, three hundred dollars. Do understand that, uh, this offer is acceptable to the town of Vanceboro as well, so, uh, it's my recommendation that the Board consider approving this.
Mr. Chairman, so moved. Second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here are none, and the motion is for the property at two forty-three B James Street in Vanceboro, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Commissioners, the second item would be property located at two, uh, two eleven Lloyd Street in Grifton. This is a final approval after the expiration of the upset bid process, our final bid was two thousand, five hundred dollars, which was, uh, the initial bid. The original, uh, past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the tax value is thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, I do recommend the Board give this, uh, final approval.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, and Commissioner Mark seconded it, do we have any discussion? And the motion is for the two eleven Lloyd Avenue with a Grifton address, still in Craven County, though.
Just barely, Mr. Chairman.
Just barely. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Pardon me, the third and final item would be another final approval for property located on, uh, Boone Road, it's out in Township five with a parcel ID number of five oh oh nine one one four. Uh, we previously received a offer of six thousand dollars, it has been through, uh, the upset bid process, there have been no, uh, competing bids, so our final amount is six thousand dollars. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and nine cents, and the tax value of the property is fifteen thousand dollars. As with the others, uh, I recommend that the Board give final approval on this, uh, transaction.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here are none, and the motion is for the property on Boone Road, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, next we have, uh, petition of citizens for general topics, Mr. Vice Chair?
We have no citizens requesting to speak.
Okay, thank you, sir, next would be the County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to update you on a couple items tonight. First would be, I know everybody's waiting for it, on May seventeenth will be the presentation of the budget to the Board. After that meeting, we'll begin our work sessions, uh, immediately after the meeting, and they will continue on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, beginning at eight-thirty in the morning. For the public and the Commissioners, these will be, uh, located down at the Convention Center, just like we've done in our previous work sessions, uh, this winter and fall. I, um, had a lot to say about the Convention Center, and I think everyone said it, but it was, uh, a mighty meaningful moment to me to stand there that morning and see that room full. It's been a long time coming, um, for the work that's been put forth by Gene and Craig and the whole staff here and what they've done and Tarsia. It's amazing to see folks back in there, I, I think the sheriff's comments would be exactly what I would say, it's exactly what we needed to make ourselves the best in North Carolina, and that was our goal going in. In talking with Gene and Tarsia, there's a lot of activity on bookings now, which is something we didn't see right after. something we didn't see right after Florence when the COVID hadn't started yet, so that's a positive sign. Obviously, this year's been touch and go, because until recently, we haven't been allowed to have large events. So we sure look forward to getting folks back to Craven County. I spoke with Mr. Antri, I believe the chairman was with me last week, and he updated us on the gap billing, which, if you remember, he came before you several times. It's gone very well. We had the initial large glut of notices that went out. Now we're back on a monthly rotation. The level of questions has been almost nothing, which is good. That means we got the message out the right way. And I just want to thank Amber Parker and our PIO staff and Mr. Antri and his team for making that as painless as possible. With that said, that's my report, unless the commissioners have any questions for me.
Any questions for the county manager?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners' Report. Commissioner McCabe?
No, sir, I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Liner?
Sir, I don't think I have anything. That's a first. Write that down.
Commissioner Mitchell?
First time.
Two quick ones. May is the month of the military spouse, just like April was the month of the military child. I would ask the board's indulgence to consider a proclamation to that effect, since we are looking at a BRAC. And the only other one is Congressman Murphy is sponsoring an eastern North Carolina cleanup this Saturday. There will be a group meeting in Cove City, there's a group meeting in Havelock, and I believe there's also a group meeting on Simmons Street as well, but I'm a little more shaky on that one. So for anyone who's interested in joining, I'll be there in Havelock. I'm going to be an honorary Havelockian.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mark?
I have nothing to report.
All right.
Where is that? Excuse me?
Yes.
You said there were groups meeting, you gave the general location, but where are they meeting? For example, you said Simmons Street.
And I don't know. I'll have to check on that one and get back with you. I know Havelock is meeting behind City Hall, and you may know where they're meeting in Cove.
Cove City, they're coming to my forum that morning and meeting there, and then we'll disperse them.
And I'll find out about Simmons.
Sure for breakfast?
Yes, we are.
I may go to Cove City.
Actually, you have to milk the cow, though.
I don't care.
All righty. I have you, George. Commissioner Mark, you said you had nothing, correct?
Right.
All right, Vice Chair Booker?
Yes, just one thing. Before the meeting tonight, at 6 o'clock, I was at the community center in James City. The first meeting, if you recall, I think it was the last meeting when Greg Singleton was here and he announced the academy that was going to be kicking off. It kicked off tonight, and they wanted to have 20 people in that academy. That's how many people they can accommodate in that room, and they had 20 people signed up, which is fantastic. But then, you always say, how many are going to show up? Well, when we were ready to kick off at 6 o'clock, there were 17 people there, and within five minutes, three more showed up. So all 20 people that signed up showed up. And the three ladies from the state were there. I didn't stay, obviously, other than just to make a couple of comments, but people seemed to be pretty excited about being there and what the opportunity was. So I'm happy and I hope that, I just encourage them all to make sure they don't drop out, that they keep coming.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate your leadership and participation in that. As the sheriff discussed about US 70, I'd like to ask the board if you would consider authorizing staff to draft a letter.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this letter would be drafted to North Carolina DOT. And then I reckon, as he said, some in the city of New Bern might want to sign on to some...
Share with the clerk.
Respond with them. All right, any discussion? Commissioner Liner?
I think the letter's great, but I'm not sure after hearing all of this, have we talked to the right people and made them aware? Have we talked to Preston Hunter, and have we talked to...
Hey, I don't know the answer to that, sir.
I do know, Commissioner Liner, that there was right much attention brought to it about a month, two months ago, and to DOT, and, you know, and this is where we're getting at. I don't know if it's a lack of communication, but nothing has been done, absolutely nothing, or nothing's been communicated back to us.
I mean, I approve the letter. I mean, I'll vote with the letter, I think it's good, but I think we need to get, before we send it out, I think you or the manager should call both of them and talk to them and see.
Sure. I actually, my brain was turning as y'all were discussing this earlier. There's a regional safety engineer that's located in our district. Heywood, we've worked with him, he's been before this board many times. I was also going to call him tomorrow as we're drafting the letter to see if there's anything he knows about it. Try to understand it better.
And I'll reach out to General Overhold.
Courtesy, I respect that.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, I have nothing else to bring before the board. We will take a few minutes break, but I do want to ask for a motion and a second to go in closed session. We have two items tonight that the board has requested to go in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318A3, Attorney Client Privilege, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in Craven County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we stand for recess for just a few minutes while our staff gets this set up.